And call to the excellence of our athletes, our coaches, our team moms, interns and volunteers and our supporters. Together, we are not just promoting athletic success, but we are saving lives and building better and brighter futures through sports. So at this time, in Hawk's spirit, we would like to extend our deepest gratitude to the Orangeburg County Council and the citizens of our community for your unwavering support. To express our appreciation, we are proud to present to you this plaque on behalf of Hollyhill Youth Sports. In other words, and in the words of our commissioner, we all we got, we all we need. One nation, Hawk nation. Thank you.
On three? One, two, three. One more? Thank you so very much, Dr. Simmons. We are so grateful for all the things that you're doing in our district to try to improve the quality of life for our young people. We want to thank all the people coming out, all the young people, all the parents, all the supporters. Keep up the good work and thank you so very much. It's well needed and you did an excellent job. You just do excellent job in everything you do, presenting it and also keeping it together. Thank you so much. God bless. I would like to say her father started this and he unexpectedly passed. Brother, I apologize. My brother started this and unexpectedly he passed. She took over the torch and keep it going. That's to be commended. So thank you so much.
I used to work with Chuck, AKA Charles Miles at SLED. And when he was in the process of putting this program together, that's all we heard about. He didn't want to work on what we had to work on. He wanted to work on this youth sports program. And, you know, it was of course devastating when he passed so suddenly. But I know he's smiling down, looking at this dream of his being carried on. So keep up the good work.
Welcome to stay as long as you want to. I know y'all have school and all this other stuff. So we understand, but if you want to stay, we'll be grateful to have you. First item on the agenda is an audit. And it's second reading. It says, "For the consideration of a request from Blue Water Civil Design LLC to rezon property on Red Bank Road in Orangeburg, tax map number 0175-12-01-001, Forest Agriculture District to Residential Bureau District." I will yield to the person that district represents on making the motion for second reading. I think it want to be instead of Residential District, Residential General. I think she wants to be.
Yes, sir. It's still listed. We did first reading under Residential Single Family. And because it hadn't been formally changed, I would like to make a motion that we reassign it from Residential General and rezon it, vote on rezoning it to Residential Single Family again. Second reading.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Walker and second by Ms. McCastle for second reading as stated for Residential Single Family. All in favor of seats say aye. And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Item two is the next one. It says, "For the consideration of a request from Master Construction Housing LLC to rezon property on Rio Drive in Orangeburg, from Residential Single Family to Residential General District. I will yield to the person who represent that district for either a motion or something."
Oh, Mr. Simmons, I'd like to make a motion on that. Rio Drive, being that I've heard from numerous of people who've called me about this area and on Rio Drive and the property owners there, I would like to make a, put a motion in to deny this motion.
Want to move that forward or just deny it?
Deny it all the way.
Before you do that, I think I have a right to come before you and say my piece.
No, not at this point, sir. You have a right and then you have.
Here's the deal.
No, what I'm saying is that you, when you have, when you have public comments, if you had, you had anything to say, that would be the time you say.
I asked, did you want me to come up? And the answer was no.
No, did you ask me what night?
Yes, sir. I asked, do you want me to come up?
When? When you had regular?
Then they were going through. I just want you to hear.
No, I didn't, I didn't see you. I apologize.
I just want you to hear.
Well, I didn't see, did you, did you see him ask you to come up?
He's asking those who oppose or those are against.
Okay. And then I said there were those who, what you called them. If you had wanted to come up, you could have come up.
No, that's what I asked. I'm in your court.
Okay. Well, at that, you, I will allow you to go ahead on this. You got the time written out, three minutes.
I just asked, will you get here with your mind? I'm the citizen of Orangeburg County.
I understand that.
I know that. And before I do that, I have this. I'd like to pass out to you.
Thank you.
First of all, tell you who I am. I'm Jerome Felder. I'm the CEO for Master Construction Housing. I also designed North Park Estate for the end of that town, okay? If I had not designed that, there wouldn't be any of this. But here's what I'm asking you to do this morning, this afternoon. First of all, I'm not denied of something that I'm not even asking for. It was one thing I was asking for that, but I'm not, okay? What purpose of this rezoning is to, one, build residential developments enhancing the county housing. Build affordable new housing in Orangeburg County according to the building codes that's comparable to strip build homes. Build full-size manufactured homes that's affordable. I heard no one criticize. Thank you. North Park Estate is a separate state community for fourteen lots that's already been approved for separately. This is what I'm doing. I don't have a third party. No mother family housing, triplexes, duplexes will be built there. All fifteen lots have been, all fourteen lots have been approved separately already. Already done. Because I was not in a position to do anything earlier. That has nothing to do with that. It will not be redesigned. North Park Estate will not be redesigned. If designed for twenty-eight houses, that's what's going there. I'm not asking you for anything else, okay? That was my request in the beginning. I did not hear anyone that did not want a manufactured home built by the county, okay? According to the codes. I expect you reconsider your thoughts. Because if it was not there, you would not be there. Understand me. I'm building affordable homes for everyone to come here. Think about yourself for an example. If I had not built North Park Estate, you would not have a place to live. Consider that. That's, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking you to do anything that should not be done. But I think they deserve that. Because that was built for twenty-eight homes, not fifteen. Okay? Not thirteen. What's up there now? My affidavit says that. I'm not asking you for anything. And not only that, it would not be so if we could do that. Because the land there would not be able to handle that separately. So be sure of the spirits about what you're turning down. The county is losing money. So think about it.
Thank you, sir. I think maybe when it comes to, it's a difference between general and single family.
Sir, I didn't have anything to do with the rules. What I'm telling you is what I've got. I'm building single-family homes only. Nothing but that.
Thank you.
And if my word is not good enough, then it's not good. That's why that would be on the deed also too. But I just gave, it reads, my attorney tells you that.
Thank you so much. So at this time, God will still approve whether you want to move it forward or not necessarily vote on it until you look into it or whether you want to just, whatever, that's your.
Mr. Chairman, my motion still stand.
Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Carvin and second by Mr. Walker. At this time, that we will deny the request. All in favor of it, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Item number three. Authorize the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by and among Orangeburg County accompanying loan to the county at this time as Project Magnolia including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates to provide for the provision, excuse me, of special source revenue credit to express the intent of Orangeburg County to place and to maintain the project property in Multicity, industrial park and other matters related thereto.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Council. If it pleases you guys this evening, this is the ordinance for second reading for Project Magnolia. This is an existing industry that is in the construction engineering industry. They will be doing some manufacturing. They will be going to a separate location and going into a bigger building. This has the potential of ninety new jobs and two point four, just over two point four million in new revenue. And then this is a SSRC agreement for twenty percent for twenty years.
Any questions for the economic development director? Very none. Could I get a motion on the second?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Lord Frazier, second by Mr. Kim. After that, we go second reading on this ordinance as explained by the director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Item number four is ordinance first reading by Talon. And it says, "An ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-eight, Article three of the Orangeburg County Court of Ordinance, Talon Tax Equalization Board." Madam Attorney, it shows?
Yes, it is. The last time this ordinance was reviewed legally was prior to nineteen eighty-three. That's over forty years ago. We were talking about the upcoming expectation that folks will be asking for hearing on their reassessment values. And those will be coming up in January. So two things are going on here at the same time. The first one is we need to make sure that all the appointments to the Tax Equalization Board are made. And the second one is just to do a legal review after forty years to make sure it's in accordance with state law. I will point out one thing, which is you currently have an ordinance that allows for seven appointments. You only need three for a panel to have a quorum. And several of the other counties that we've looked at their ordinances, they have between fifteen and twenty people on the boards, broken into three-person panels so they could rotate them through all the hearings. One day, this group has five hearings. The next day, a different group has. So it's not all of the same people. I don't know what we will ultimately suggest when it comes to the number of appointments. But certainly you want to make sure that at least the seven you've got on the books right now are filled. And they are not at this time.
Thank you. I guess we, before we ask for a motion second on the first reading, I'm just saying that, you know, we are always looking for people that are interested in serving on some of these boards. You can go online or you can call in or you can do whatever if you're interested in trying to be part of the process. Especially if you are a person that's have some knowledge in forestry stuff or you could be property values and things of that nature. We need you to be part of the process.
Chair, which ones are not filled?
Well, I know one's not filled. My, my district's not filled. I don't know.
There was an email that was sent out to let you know.
Yeah, for what district did not have, I know mine's not filled. My individual inspired, he died and I know it's refilled. So I know that for sure. So I'll be looking for someone, so. Anyway, if there's no other question, could I get a motion as second for first reading by Talon?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Carvin and second by Ms. Walker. That be Talon on item number four, first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Next item also is by Talon one. This is an ordinance authorizing Orangeburg County to execute a quick claim deed in favor of John F. Brailsford Jr. regarding a property commonly referred to in the Orangeburg County tax map system. It's tax map number 0173-07-018-041.
This is just to correct a mistake that was made. The, in this case, this particular parcel went up for sale for delinquent tax purposes and did not sell. And so it was titled to the Forfeited Land Commission, which is the next step that you take in that process. The Forfeited Land Commission then sold it to Mr. Brailsford, but also inadvertently entered a deed for it to go to Orangeburg County too. And we have checked with the various departments to make sure that this property is not involved in any project that the county's doing and that it was just an error. And that's what the information has come out today. So to clear that record, you've got to do three readings in a public hearing.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the attorney? Thank you. Could I get a motion as second to first reading?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCastle, second by Ms. Walker. That we do first reading by Talon on the item five that explained by the attorney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Next two item is an ordinance first reading. And this is a plan to mission resolution and an ordinance first reading. Item six says, "For the consideration of a request from Land Code Developer LLC to rezon property on Gardner Boulevard in Hollyhill, tax map number 0333-00-03-005, Forest Agriculture District to Bendis Industrial District." At this time, from what I understood, this is, this is an extension of a Bendis area and they want to make sure that they're going to develop the area. They have it in the right zone capacity. So could I get someone to give a motion as second on item six?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, second by Ms. Cooper Smith. That we do first reading on item six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Item seven is also first reading. And this is for the consideration of a request from Orangeburg County to rezon property on fourteen oh four Springfield Road, Springfield, South Carolina, tax map number 0012-13-12-001 from Residential General District, Forest Agriculture District. It says on there that it's District Five, I don't know. That's why I thought it was Springfield would be yours. But on the paper, it said District Five. That must be on the background information. Yep. And I had a question mark by that because I'm sitting there. Do you have any issues with that, Mr. Carvin?
No, sir. No, sir. I have, I make a motion that we pass this.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Carvin, second by Mr. Lord Frazier. That we ask first reading on item seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposeders, ayes have it and motions care. Next item on the agenda is the resolution as item eight. And it says, "Resolution Certification to Dissolve the Horse Range Watershed Conservation District." Madam Attorney or Mr. Minister, you want to say anything on that?
Mr. Chair and members of council, this is a resolution stated to dissolve the Horse Range Watershed Shed District. The Board of Election conducted the referendum at the time of the general election. The board certified the referendum with approval of sixty-seven percent in favor and thirty-two point ninety-one percent against it for you for passing the resolution.
Okay. So I guess we dissolve it. So they're going to come up a different way of trying to keep it maintained, hopefully. But at this time, we dissolve it. No waiting, no other. Just keep it maintained.
From what we hear, once you dissolve that, it falls to the county. And the voters dissolved it.
All right. Whatever little bit of cough they was putting in there just to keep it up. And I guess the county have to take that and take it over. Can I, can I get a motion as second?
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier and second by Ms. Walker. That we dissolve the Horse Range as the desire of the district.
My question is, Mr. Mayor and I, this attorney, do they have any liability if the attorney converts back to the county?
I can give you a legal briefing on that in the executive session. But there's always the potential for liability. I think the bottom line is they need somebody who's actually interested enough, and that would be counsel, in making sure that it is maintained properly. And to do that, you're going to have to add taxes to the tax rule that used to go to this district. It just switches who gets paid the money. And then who actually decides how it's spent.
I would say you have a vote on that.
We can't, we can't really do that. Well, no, we have a vote on it. The thing about it is it's already been true. People already voted. We can't change it. So one thing we can do is vote ourselves a resolution. And then we'll talk about that.
You're certifying the result, not that you're in favor of it.
That's the only reason why I said that because the county got an liability as it is, you know. Take it on board.
And our risk manager couldn't agree with you more. He had to go somewhere else, but he really didn't want this district to be dissolved.
Right.
It was so.
All right. All in favor to say on this?
Aye.
We got two. Four ayes, five ayes. Five ayes. Rather than opposing, I'll just stand in the middle. I've never done this in my life. I'm going to stand in the middle and scream because this is in my district, so. So anyway, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is official action. Item nine, approval of the twenty twenty-five Orangeburg County Council Regular Session Schedule and also approval of the twenty twenty-five Paid Holiday Schedule for the county employees. And we can take both of those together, I think, because that's just a formality that we does every year. At the end of the year, we make a listing of the holidays and the time that council meets for its public knowledge for the public. So can I get a motion as second to pass those two items?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Ms. Fisher Walker. That we pass item nine. Ten, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposedes, ayes have it and motions care. Next item, the recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee. And I will yield to the administrator to outline those what they did in that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. The Orangeburg County Tax and Tourism Committee met on November twenty-sixth for their regularly quarterly meeting. The following funding recommendations. New Perspective Media Association, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Holly Hill Christmas Festival, five thousand dollars. South Carolina Civil Rights Museum, twenty-five thousand dollars. Total of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars was requested and approved.
Thank you so much. Madam Administrator, we look at the background information. We see, oh, there was a whole lot of accident, but that's all the money they had, so they stopped at that point. So could I get a motion as second to accept what they did?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Lord Frazier and second by Ms. Ravenel. That we accept the information that was passed on by the Tourism Committee and explained by the administrator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposedes, ayes have it and motions care. Next item is an update from the Finance Committee. And I'll yield to its chairperson, Ms. Cooper Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee, this meeting was basically to obtain information on how to start small business enterprise program.
Thank you so very much, Senator. This will be a continuation as we keep evolving.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we go back to the procurement under recommendation from Tax and Tourism?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't vote on?
Um, no. You went down to updates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It should be procurement.
Yes, I got you.
Yes, sir.
I thought I'd say, okay. I thought, say, okay. I thought I said, uh, you know, a motion of second on the recommendation that was presented by the administrator?
It was on Tax and Tourism, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Procurement.
Procurement. Right upon that.
Okay, got you. Okay, I got you. Rentals, I'm sorry, I apologize. I flipped right over that. Procurement. Just because you had 25-08-05 Work Uniform Service Rentals. Who's, who's that? That's your, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of, uh, council. A request for proposal for the Orangeburg County Work Uniform Services, uh, was requested. The request for proposal was advertised on Orangeburg County website and bidnetdirect.com. The proposals were due on August 5th, and the county received one proposal that's listed, uh, the Sintas Cooperation. Local state and MBA preference were given. Sintas Cooperation is deemed responsible bidder, and it was a recommendation of Public Works Director, uh, Mr. Summers, that we accept the, uh, Bendah Sintas Cooperation.
Any questions from council? If I could get a motion of second to pass the procurement, the recommendation as explained by the administrator?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence Frazier, second by Mr. McCastor, that we accept the recommendation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Thank you so much for pointing that out. The next one is appointment of board commissions and committees. Um, item E is, uh, Orangeburg County Fire District, District 1, 3, 1, 2, 3, 6, and 7, I'll yield to someone, Mr. Ravenel, give a motion of second?
Mr. Chairman, it was amended. We amended it.
It may be amended earlier, yeah.
Names of, um, wanted to the Fire Commission District, District 1 is Gene Davis Capers, uh, District 2, Thomas N. Westberry Jr., District 3, Kenton Metz, District 6, Jerry Richardson, District 7 is Ken Davis. They'll got a recommendation today by a commission board.
And that's in the form of a motion, could I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Ravenel, and second by either Ms. Frazier or Mr. McCastor, that we accept his recommendation to reappoint him to the Fire District. All in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item B is Tax and Tourism Advisory Committee for, uh, District 1. Could I get a, get someone to make that motion for that person that's going to be District This is District 1. This is the person's right there with the motion, but she's going to point to District 1.
When they can motion that, ooh.
She's an Asian, Asian man, so right there a little...
Some masa yaki.
Well, anyways, she, she knows, Ms., clerk knows the name, so we got, okay? Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we appoint, uh, person to District 1 as the Tax and Tourism, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Thank you so much. Uh, at this time, we will have an, uh, was it an update from Public Works Committee, from the works meeting on November 16th?
Uh, we have a question. Um, about the, uh, Long Branch? Yeah, Long Branch. What happened, yeah, we had a workshop meeting about, um, not only we usually abandoned maintenance on, uh, county dirt roads, but due to, um, the recommendation is that on this particular road, we going to discontinue, um, uh, maintenance on this dirt road here, instead of just abandoning than, um, maintenance on it, but we, I'll yield to our, our, um, attorney, I think she's supposed to start paperwork to that.
I believe this is Long Branch?
Yes.
Okay. Long Branch, uh, there were two things that I wrote from the Public Works Committee meeting. Uh, and the first one is to discontinue maintenance of the road, and the second is to actually, uh, file a road closure petition, uh, just to make... Yeah, for a portion of Long Branch Road, thank you very much. Uh, the part that was washed out. Okay, so this is a damaged area that is not used by the general public. It's just a little piece, uh, and it would cost much more to fix it than it would for the use. So those were the two recommendations, discontinue maintenance, and the second one is to go to court to get it closed for that one little portion.
And that's in District Number 4, that's in my district, even though that is in Wuffton South Carolina, they still can get in and out of the area that they're asking to be closed. They've closed it on one end and opened it up on the other end, and so that people on the end that's, on the western end, they can get out on that end, and the people on the northern end, they can get out on that end, so it won't be a problem. And they, everybody has agreed to do this. Thank you.
And I would put that in form of a motion, and, um, turn it over to the hand of our attorney to go through the process.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, second by Mr. McCastor, to follow procedure as explained by the attorney and Public Works Chairperson. So all in favor of it, let's say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Before we ask for a motion of adjournment, do I have any comment from the council people or staff?
I have a comment. Um, South Carolina State University won a place to play in the bowl in Atlanta, Georgia, December the 14th. Um, as of today, we do not know who we will be playing, because, um, some other opponents, we got a, whosoever win the next game, whenever they come up, then we will know who we will be playing. But one great thing is that we will be playing in the Mercedes-Benz Stadium again, and hopefully whosoever we will win, um, in Atlanta, and that's on December the 14th. So please, everybody, find your way to Mercedes-Benz Stadium on the 14th to support the South Carolina State University Bulldogs. And go Bulldogs. Yes, ma'am?
That would be Southern University or Jackson State, they play on Saturday?
Well, um, I talked with Buddy today, and as of, and I had a conversation with him, Buddy Pugh, he said he didn't know exactly who we were going to play against, but it was the two teams, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, uh, that the Orangeburg County Animal Control will kick off its, uh, Christmas campaign, and with that, the county will host three pet food and pet supplies giveaway events throughout the county. Donated, uh, goods from Chewy and Pet Supplies Plus, and the locations are Santee Conference Center, Orangeburg Fairground, Giant Flea Market. Santee is on December the 6th, Orangeburg Fairground is December 13th, and Giant Flea Market is, uh, December the 20th, and all location times, uh, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Any other? Very none, could I get? I thank you all for attending our meeting, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So... Second.
Will be second, that be adjourned? Pick a name. Thank you all so very much, we appreciate you.
Rid of the chairman, the chairman.
Chairman? Just a party, party, not...